Did this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order? And please note attendance Denise.
Denise.
Debbie, excuse me. Old habits. Sorry Debbie. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to use this. Okay, it's good to be here at Central Howell. Dustin, you're first on the agenda.
So I thought, since I'm going to be at the next regular board meeting in May, that I just talk about our facility here at Central Howell and then I'll give you all the other good information in May. So to lead off our facility talk, we have a great custodian here at Central Howell, Richard Winkler. He's been here for several years. Sometimes he's taken to go work over at Prattum, sometimes other places, but he's here. Ours is our full-time custodian and he does a great job of keeping our school clean and he gets along great with staff, very easy to work with, so I wanted to mention that. We also have a great parent club that takes care of our school very well. They spend lots of money on our school, on our building itself. They brought in lots of rock to make our parking area much nicer, but despite their efforts, we still get those nasty pot holes. And the district has started coming out and trying to smooth those out, but they just continually reappear. But that rock is there because of our parent club. And they've also put in a lot of time raking up, blowing up leaves, lots of truckloads of leaves from our wonderful poplar trees. And they've had a couple of cleanup days, but they've been so great at cleaning up the campus that the job isn't as big as it used to be. And we have some anonymous, I never know who does it and they don't really come forward, but we do get some people come in on the weekends and blow leaves and all of a sudden they're just gone, which is really nice.
Very nice.
But I'm sure it's people from our parent club. Several projects have been completed here at Central Howell. In these two end classrooms, so there's four classrooms along this side, and the two end classrooms, when you come in, you'd have these lights that were two or three feet hanging down across the room, like four columns of lights. And so it was asked, could the parent club pay somebody to raise those? Well, finally it was done and it has made those classrooms so nice. It was, even though Mrs. Sparks' old room and the kindergarten room, their lights are up on the ceiling, but you'd go in the other room and it wasn't that big, it didn't seem like it was that big a deal, but when they were raised up and the parent club paid for an electrician to come out and do it, it really made a nice difference in the classrooms. Plus, when we had our nice TVs that were installed, mostly paid for by our parent club, then everybody had full view of the nice big display. Another thing was the district has put on new siding on the south end of the school building, the upper, the backside of the stage area. And then also we got a brand-new south wall on this side, portable, because they were all really, really bad shape. I mean, we had a lot of vandalism over the years on this south wall, the portable, kids playing basketball and they'd run into it and whatever and you'd come out on Monday morning to see how things were going and there'd be some new dent, new hole in the wall, just because it was so destroyed by the weather that anybody could do damage to it easily. Painting, painting of the inside of the stage area and new carpeting, the school paid for that. New windows on our middle school rooms, so when you walk out to go to your cars, look over at the middle school classrooms. And there used to be these metal grates to keep balls or whatever from breaking the windows, but we managed to go without those grates. And nice new windows and nice new ceilings. So then the teachers, both middle school teachers, they had a great idea that they wanted to have the kids sitting in smaller groups, so they put in tables in their rooms and put the desks downstairs in the basement. Well, the nice new ceiling, along with a lot less furniture, made like a cave in there and the sound just rattled around really bad, made those classrooms very noisy. And so we used some of the donor money to have some of our parents install sound panels around the top of the room, all the way around, and that really reduced the noise dramatically. They even took an app on their phone to measure the sound before and after and it was statistically dramatically different. On October 11th, we were broke into. We were broke into through the side door that you could see if you're over getting gaps and you look over at the school, you've got the stairs up to the old main part of the building and then you've got this little door off to the side and I think it was called the old library door. And someone broke in through that and they came in, got laptop, a couple Chromebooks, some iPads, knew where the keys were, grabbed the master keys, all that stuff. So I'm making the assumption that that person knew exactly where things were and they were in and out pretty quickly because the police were here in about six and a half minutes. So they were in and out. So that forces to rekey the whole school, but the nice part about that is we no longer have any keys out in the community floating around. So that was all taken care of. And then we used some of the donor money to pay for a security camera in the office area. And currently I have asked the tech department to work with Reliant for a security camera DVR system, then we can get a rural community grant to help pay for that. So hopefully that will come through. We've got a June 1st deadline for grant applications, so that's what we're working on there. I would like to get that side door framed in and drywalled and removed. That's all up to whether the fire marshal will allow something like that, but it's never used. It's never used in any way. The fire marshal will say yes or no and hopefully we can go by whatever they say. The fencing was completed around the entire south and east property lines and the district paid for that. And that really looks nice and I think it has helped people feel a lot better about the security situation. And we have padlocks that have all the same key and we've given all of our staff members the keys to the padlock, so we have to evacuate the property or go get a ball that's been knocked over the fence, that simplifies all that. We have a brand-new sound system that our parent club paid for, so a lot of this, not every cable, but a lot of those, all the hardware there and then the speakers that were installed, our parent club paid for all that. And that was recently installed last week by Drew and Casey Stadley and some other parents. Future projects, organizing the basement again. We had it really nice and organized several years ago, but now we have a lot of extra stuff down there, so we're going to have to repack it and maybe get rid of some of it. Some of it, I know we can send to some of our other schools because they want some desks that we can certainly give them. A lot of it's in excellent condition, we just don't have a need for it right now. We need to adjust the track because when the nice new fence came in, the survey said that we didn't have as much property as we thought we did. So our east property line and our south property line, our track, is about half of the width of what it used to be. So talk to the parent club about getting a quick fix on that, on readjustment on the track, and then maybe a more permanent, maybe more permanent adjustment for preparing for the next school year. Painting the exterior of the building is always going to be a need and I know that's on a district cycle. Replacing the lights in the gym, we have to turn these lights on and they stay on all day long because these are the kind of lights that when you turn them off, they have to cool off before you turn them back on, so we don't have the instant on and off, which is not as good. And you can see over time how the heat from the lights has destroyed the plastic covering of the insulation. So hopefully we can get those lights replaced, one of these days, because I'm sure they're a major waste of electricity. And being able to shut them off after every class exits the gym would be really nice. We have to adjust in some way the front sidewalks on the north side of the school, the tree roots have really lifted, some of those cement sections of the sidewalk. And I already told you about hopefully getting that rural community grant for the security cameras. So that is kind of Central Howell in a nutshell. Any questions about that?
Lots of good stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Between the parent club and the school and the school district, we've been able to make a lot of nice improvements in the school.
Have you been able to replace your laptops and Chromebooks as your, I don't think I heard you say?
Well, one of the laptops stolen was one that I used because they came into my office. And so I think I had a replacement laptop from our tech department by about noon, so that was pretty nice. And all of my stuff was backed up to the cloud, so it was just a matter of logging in and it dumps it back on, so that was great. The iPads, because of the way school insurance works, you know, it's not like our homeowner's insurance, we just kind of had to eat those, but we are buying some replacement iPads out of next year's budget to go into the kindergarten room, which was where those iPads were going to go. And I think we only lost one Chromebook, and we got one iPad back. Somebody got a hole in one of our iPads and tried to turn it into one of those kiosks and they had to leave their driver's license picture and their thumbprint and their own photograph. And so amazingly, the police were able to track them down. And so we did get one back, but I don't know where all the other things went. But it was, it was really, I mean, it's like having your house broke into is really odd. I walked in, I thought, man, what's out of place here? And then we just started noticing more and more stuff, but it had to have been somebody who knew exactly where to go. They were just in and out too quickly. But that's the first time in I don't know how long that we've had that kind of situation here. So that's not too bad. Any other questions?
Other questions?
The lights that you were just talking about, they said that they have melted the plastic from the heat of them when they're on.
Yeah, they radiate a lot of heat and just over the years it just.
It's just melted?
Yeah.
So.
Dry and cracked. I don't know about melting, but dried and cracked.
Okay. That worries me a little bit, because what, you know.
But you see.
The material up there is just old and dry.
Really nice insulation over here because there's no light.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, thank you Dustin. Thanks for having us too. Okay, normally during our work sessions, we don't. Jennifer's in there. Yeah, normally during our work sessions, we don't have an audience with visitors, but these that we've had out in the rural schools, we have added an audience with visitors just to, if anybody wants to give us any feedback on, you know, thoughts about things or whatever. So would anybody like to, it's your only chance. I'll give you more than three minutes even if anybody wants to. Okay, so we'll move on. Jennifer, we're going to look at our mid-year review district goals and strategic visioning plan goals. Jennifer and, or are we jumping, are we?
Is that okay?
That's fine. We will do the review of social emotional learning support curriculum.
Awesome. So you all have heard quite a bit about this, I think, in all of the principal reports and mentioning the process that we have a need for some social emotional learning resources, not just in our district, but nationwide, not just in Oregon either. So our process was we had PLCs work at the beginning of the year, started with the process of what are our non-negotiables per building? So when a kid leaves any building, whether it's K8 or K2 or 35 or 68, what do we need them to know what's non-negotiable? So the staff work this year for PLC was what are the non-negotiable skills for math and for English language charts and science and social studies and health? So each staff in each building had to do, these were our math, these were science, but the other things that every building came up with is the social emotional learning. We need them to have social awareness and self-awareness and self-management and responsible decision-making and relationship skills. So how do we do that? So then the requests started coming in of like, we need to do this in a way that makes sense, all feeding into the same place with the same vocabulary. So we put together, similar to what we would do for a curriculum adoption, whether if it was math or science or English or something else. We got representatives from all of the buildings. We pulled in the approved or recommended curriculums to have for people to look at. The group brainstormed, what is it that we need, what are the things we need from a social emotional learning curriculum? And then they sat around the room and rated all of the curriculums based on what our criteria was and what we needed. So I'm going to let Dawn speak to you from the teacher perspective. She was representing Prattum School, teaching 68. But Rhonda Hurley also wanted to be here. She represented Silvercrest School in grade two, and so she sent a statement for me to read. So I'll read Rhonda's statement and then let Dawn speak with you about why they chose what they chose. To whom it may concern, I asked every parent at the start of the year what their hopes were for their children in the upcoming year. I was expecting to hear them say they were hoping for growth in specific academic areas, but almost every parent in that way told me that they wanted to see their children become good friends to others and to continue to learn how to be good problem solvers with issues that arise amongst their peers. When the social emotional needs of students are being met, they are ready for academic learning. What is becoming increasingly important is for us to have a common structure and language to facilitate these conversations amongst classrooms and vertically amongst grade levels. If we started this work in kindergarten and continued it up through to high school, we will have kids who know how to talk to one another and how to listen. Students will be better prepared to handle their stress and anxiety and how to work through difficult emotions in a safe and healthy way. We are long overdue for a social emotional curriculum that gives us this much-needed instruction. I piloted four lessons of the SEL curriculum, Karen School Community, in my second grade classroom to see its impact on the students and our learning environment. The lessons are set up very simply with a structure that teachers can incorporate into time chunks that work for them. Students quickly learn the structure of a class meeting, the rules of how to talk about issues that they have with courtesy and kindness, how to respectfully agree or disagree, and it gives the teacher a great series of open-ended questions to help the students facilitate the conversation. I like that the class meetings gave a predictable structure to these types of conversations and because it was proactive, it prevented much of the reactive work that teachers so often have to do throughout the day. My students love it. They look forward to our classroom and I notice them using the language and structures that we had learned in the lessons later in the day when they were mediating their own issues with their friends at recess. I look forward to seeing what this will look like throughout the rest of this year and hoping I can start next year with the curriculum to begin the year with the essential tools for my kids. Thank you, Rhonda Hurley, second grade teacher, Silvercrest Elementary.
All right.
Say you Dawn.
Well, I was on the committee and we got to look at five different samples and this by far, Karen Communities, just really stood out to me because it's what I'm already doing in my classroom. And so to me, when you tell a teacher, oh, starting next year, you're going to have to teach this on a full plate, we're already feeling stressed, your anxiety level goes up because you think, how am I going to fit this in? Where is it going to go? So this to me was awesome because it's what we're already doing, but it creates a framework and it creates consistency for every grade K through 12. I see this working no matter if you're a country school and you've got, you know, 6, 7, and 8, a classroom worker just dealing with second graders in town or seniors. What I liked about this is it focuses on relationships and Rhonda mentioned that quite a bit, but you start with setting up very first week or two of school, you set up, and this is our core idea is a class meeting. And so it gives teachers a chance to set norms. You know, we will listen to each other and then eye contact when somebody is talking. So kids don't always do that and they can't talk if they don't have the floor, they have to wait. They learn how to be respectful. Thank you for saying that, I agree with Ron because, or thank you, but I disagree because. So it's teaching them how to value each other's opinions and really learn how to listen to each other. So that's sort of the core. Inside here are built-in lessons. So they have lessons on bullying, stealing, inclusion, exclusion of your peers, and they bring that to the class meeting with the teacher facilitating. And then the kids really brainstorm themselves, okay, what could we do to solve this problem? So what I like about it, instead of me standing up in front of the classroom and saying, you will be respectful, you will do this, they really come up, they brainstorm themselves and come up with their own ideas, which gives them buy-in to what you're doing. I did two lessons and my kids want to do it again because middle school especially, they just want to talk, they just want to be heard, and this gives them that place to do that. So it's set up where you can do certain lessons or if you have a situation that comes up, you call a class meeting and then you sit and talk about it. So I liked the flexibility of it a lot. Another thing I noticed, I don't know if you noticed that, but they use the same language that we use currently. So engagement strategies, like turn to your partner and talk with your partner about what we just discussed. Or you might, another engagement strategy we use is think pair share, where partners get together, or tea party, okay? Well, you two now find two more people and you four people talk about what it is and be ready to share. So it feels like such a great fit because it's using the language that we're currently using in our classrooms and the kids are familiar with that language. I just feel like they just need to learn, they need better social skills, learning to listen to each other, accepting different opinions, different points of view, being respectful of that, valuing others for who they are. So I, there's no argument that we need something in our schools and I feel like this really has been, I just love it too and my kids have loved it. So I'm asking, I guess, that you guys would consider this curriculum as we go forward for next year. I know that they've added some new K through 8, and so there'll be some updated curriculum throughout the summer that we can use in our classrooms. Anyway, it's great stuff. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to.
Question Dawn, so is this something that's targeted K through 12 right now or is it something that merely focuses towards, let's say, K through 6 and then supplements as you get to 7th and 8th? How does that work?
Right, well, right now it's K 6. And so, and they're coming out with a 68 is my understanding. And then I don't know if they have specific curriculum for 9, 12, but the way they structure the communities, the class meetings, you could do anything with that. I'm not sure about high school.
That's how the AGs were designed to run.
Okay, so the assumption is by the time they get to the high school, they really don't need that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, is it something that, it's K through 6, a one-size-fits-all? If you buy the module or the package, it's for the entire K through 6? Or can you say, let's roll it out, K through 2? How does that work?
Well, I think all of the grade level teachers want it now, so there would be some fisticuffs if we said we're going to pilot in these grade levels.
Sure.
But it's designed for one kit per classroom and they work in grade bands. So we will have it available to us in August, K 8. So Dawn would get the middle school kit, so she'd get one kit for her 6, 7, 8 classroom. And like the second grade teachers would get the, I think it's a 2, 3, or it's K 1, 2 kit, but they work in grade bands, so those would go. And as Dawn said, there's topics that are structured, but they also have a lot of open-ended topics, or what are you guys seeing at recess? What is challenging you in the classroom? As the holidays approach, like what is, what is that like for you?
Or even things like, this was great because sometimes you don't think about this, preparing for a substitute in your classroom. My daughter works in Salem Kaiser, there are three of them in the classroom, two of the teachers were out today. She was the only one in there with two substitutes who had never been in there. So if the class had been prepped before, you know, the teachers were both gone, how are we, how are we going to, you know, approach this? Oh, this was a good one, planning for a field trip. How do we act on a field trip? What are we going to do when we're out in public? I have kids I just assume know how to act in public and no, they don't. No, so you really can't make any assumptions and I like this because it just seems really, really practical and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't say you have to teach this, this, and this. It's what's going on in the classroom right now? Let's go to here and let's see if there's something that addresses it and if not, we can still talk about it as a classroom. And so really you're just establishing those norms and then you're working within that. And I think that's what makes it so appealing to me and I think it'll be appealing to other teachers as well.
Dawn, you, oh, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead, you started.
You said something about, you said like kids just basically need better social skills these days, just the field trip example you just gave. Is that something that you've kind of seen come in for a while? I mean, was it that way 10 years ago or has it been?
Well, I just told Jennifer, it's been about 10 years, I think.
Guess what paid out 10 years ago?
Technology.
Technology, big technology stuff.
Yeah. And I was telling Jennifer, it hasn't happened overnight, it's been a slow progression, but definitely over a 10-year period, I've seen a difference in kids. Now, people try to blame it on technology or whatever. I don't think there's one cause.
I think it's a combination.
I think it's a combination of things, but our, you know, even at Prattum, it's like our little school, it's changed. We have problems, we have issues that we didn't have 10 years ago. And there's multiple reasons for that. But, but I think, especially at junior high, they just need to be able to voice their opinion and I feel like if you have a place for that, you know, you could say, let's wait, let's talk about it during our class meeting tomorrow or today at 2 o'clock or whatever. And so it just, it empowers them a little bit. Kids feel like victims, they feel like they've been picked on, nobody likes me, everybody hates me, I'm not going to come to school. And so you have this spiral downward and it's hard to get kids to feel good about themselves. A lot of kids have stress, anxiety. I have kids that bite on their fingers. I mean, this is junior high, lots of stress, lots of anxiety.
At Prattum too.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mean to say that lightly because.
Yeah.
Because historically, the allied schools have had different populations of kids than in-town schools.
But we're seeing, we're seeing same sorts of behaviors.
Yeah, interesting. And it's interesting that that's the, one of the things that Mrs. Hurley asked all her parents and they said the same thing, so.
Yeah.
Interesting.
It's tough stuff. One of the things that the team liked the most about this is our schools vary so much with blended classrooms, straight-grade classrooms, rural town, teacher does everything, lots of interventionists and specialists are involved, but this will work anywhere because it's just about building a framework to solve problems in. It's just about building those skills. So it works in any, in any classroom. It also has four components. It's got the classroom component, it has a building-wide component, so there's a principal's kit that goes, so it's about the school climate and assemblies and newsletters and all of that. There's a home component and then there's a mentor component. So it works best with schools that have access to big kits, so it's not wonderful for Mark Twain or Robert Frost because they don't necessarily have that, but both the Robert Frost and Mark Twain representatives said that's the one anyway for them, so.
They call them buddies and they buddy up with a younger student or an older student. And we found that at Prattum still is a great thing. I mean, we just, we go in, we are family, we play with each other, we're respectful of each other and so they're used to interacting with each other at our school. Some schools try to keep them apart, oh, we can't have first graders with eighth graders. But we just set up expectations, this is how we act with each other and this is what we expect and it works really well. And they ask, can we meet with our buddies? So it's been a positive thing.
That's really exciting.
So, I, I, sorry, Shelley, go ahead. So in order to get, um, so in order to have this curriculum implemented and really instilled in the culture of the school, um, you know, your classified staff, your aides in your classrooms, um, your specialist teachers, will they be a part of using this? So when your kids are in music and you're, in your planning period and the teacher can, or the, you know, whatever specialist teacher can also facilitate that to keep it consistent across the board in the building?
Sure, I would see our PE teacher using it, our music teacher using it, an aide.
Yeah.
Uh, being part of the discussion at minimum.
Okay, right.
And I don't, at, at our school, we're so small and we've got so much going on all the time. Our aides are very an integral part of everything we do on a daily basis. So, um, the thing that makes me nervous always is when you say something, "Oh, new to teachers, oh, we're going to do this and I'm so excited and da-da-da." And then they go, oh, you know, you kind of have this downer thing.
You know.
So, um, I, you know, Rhonda and I, I mean, I'm super passionate about this and, um, I would be willing to, you know, um, mentor other teachers, talk to other teachers, do a video and say, and, and there are videos online. You can actually go to, um, Cary School Communities if you're interested. And there's some videos there on YouTube that you can watch in action. Um, but I feel like if you get a few people on board who are really excited about it and say, "Hey, I'm going to use this in my classroom, the kids are excited about it." And I think most teachers would say, "We need something." And so, again, for all the reasons, it just feels like it's what we're already doing, the same language, um, just super easy to implement.
I think from the testimonies last Thursday at the budget committee meeting, um, I asked, um, at the end of their presentations, I asked, you know, if their top three things that they really wanted, if they had the money. Um, and most, the majority of them said essentially under the umbrella of social and emotional support. So, um, I'm, and then that was a consistent response throughout our entire district. So, um, K through 12. So I think that, um, you know, this is going along the lines of getting started and starting a foundation of instilling that in our, in our district. Um, and I think that's a really positive thing for sure going forward.
I agree.
Um, Jennifer, I have a question for you. We talked about, um, this a couple of times. How, and we talked about how, um, AG was started in the high school years ago. And there was a specific reason why they were started. And they, there was curriculum in there that helped talk with kids about basically social and emotional health. Yeah, so if this is K through eight, essentially, what are the plans for the AGs in the high schools? Instead of just, you know, going to see teachers and catching up on your work and, you know, doing graduation stuff or, you know, busy administrative things. What, are we going to try to go back to that thought process for the AGs?
Yeah, and I think they have taken a step in that direction this year. There is still what they call fox pause, which is the go, wake up a test, go talk to a teacher, go turn something in. There are those, but with it being four days a week, there's some of those, there's lesson day and there's a conversation day. So the lessons at the high school level are around the, um, the career learning plans.
Right.
So there's things that they need to do to get the career credits, the resumes and the job shadows and the interviews and the, so those happen in AGs.
Right, right.
But then there's also like the, the social issues that are happening in the high school. They build, um, open-ended questions for conversations, really in this model, even now.
Okay, okay, I was just trying to connect.
They'll just come better trained to do it appropriately.
What's that?
They'll just come to AG better trained to do this appropriately.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And I think at that meeting, as we looked at curriculum, the high school teachers even said, the ones that were there, "Oh, my goodness, this fits exactly with what we're doing right now."
Yeah, that's what you mentioned.
Make it work.
Yeah, so to roll that, you know, when those kids start coming up to the high school, they'll just start coming in with this foundation.
Right.
And then they can just build on it, which is exactly what we want, so.
And I remember years ago, when I first started teaching, doing this, where we would sit around in a circle and maybe we would have a ball. And we would talk and then nobody else could talk. And then I, you raise your hand, we throw you a ball, oh, and now you get to speak. And so, um, and, yeah. And, and those kinds of things, you know, you just sort of forget and then you get busy doing other things. But this reminded me, oh, yeah, I used to do something very similar to this and it was awesome. And so it's, um, you know, it's a, it's a little more regimented. It gives you some more resources, it gives you specific lessons and things you can talk about, which is great too.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
Can I chime in briefly? I just wanted to say, I love this idea of the older kids mentoring the younger kids. I think that's really a strength of our K eight system. Because I think kids behave better when they have younger kids watching them. So I think that's really good. And another piece of thought for us when we're thinking about the recommendation from the enrollment committee about Robert Frost and Mark Twain adjusting the way they do their grades. Um, and then I had one question for you. Do you think principals, um, that they will expect teachers to run classroom meetings like a certain number of days per week? Um, is that something that you think though?
Yeah, we have just started talking about that. So there's been some discussion, you know, we're adding some counseling support. So there's been some discussion about, is this something that council would run then? And everybody's very clear that, no, this has to be teacher-run because it has to be a continuous conversation all through the day, all through the week. It's not a standalone program, it's building a truck. So, um, so yeah, I think they all are on board. They all have heard very clearly in their PLC work and just in their day-to-day work with their teachers that they need some additional layers of support and resources for how kids interact with each other, have the self-awareness, the social awareness, the self-regulation, you know, all of that stuff they're struggling with. So, you know, this is the program to make it work, they're going to support it.
Well, in this program, this type of program, um, it will just be a domino effect for teaching the subjects, so it'll come easier. I mean, and it does, it's, I mean, it's proven in educational journals that when you have, you know, socially, emotionally well-adjusted kids that, you know, can do that, that the grades are good, the teaching is better. The attention is better, the attendance goes up. Everything wor, starts to work better, so.
They want to come to a place where they feel safe.
That's right.
And they feel valued and they feel heard.
Yep.
And if you can do that, then you've got kids that want to come to school.
They do.
Yeah. But if you've got little, a little gal over here that's being bullied, she's being excluded and you don't know how to address that, um, then it becomes very difficult.
It sure does.
And so, and I just, I like it because it teaches you adult skills. You know, listen, talk to the, you know, look at the person you're talking to. Um, it's just, it just seems very relatable, something they can, skills they can use throughout their lifetime.
Well, and another mention of that is, um, civics classes in high school really help students at that age start doing, you know, really at that level of, of development.
Right.
You know, they start really talking to adults in that manner. And it really helps to facilitate constructive discussion. So it kind of fits, it kind of fits together, you know, yeah, civic classes.
And like, as you mentioned, um, you know, even having students stand up in front of their peers or in front of adults to be able to talk.
Right.
You know, this is another avenue for them to practice that.
Right.
Not just giving a speech or whatever, but, you know, being able to express what I'm thinking.
So one other quick question then. So it's, is this something where you set aside five or 10 or 15 minutes? Or is this something you supplement throughout the day as the scenarios make themselves known?
So it, it, both, yes.
A bit of both?
Uh-huh, whatever you feel the need is, which is, I like the flexibility of that. Um, so you could decide at minimum, you're going to have a class meeting once a month, maybe on the second Tuesday of the month. But as things come up, you can call a class meeting anytime. It could be two minutes, it could be 10 minutes, whatever, you know. And that was another reason I, I just love this because it, it gives you the flexibility to do that. And then once you've set your norms, your class norms, you post them. Um, and then you don't even have to worry about that anymore because you can just get down to the nitty-gritty.
Sweet, now, can I take that home tonight?
Sure, you need it for your daughter.
Yes, I do. Better intervention, I'll take that.
This, I can leave this with anybody, this is not mine. It was just given to me, um, as a sample. If you guys want to pass it around and look at it real quick and then give it to Jennifer.
I can send you a website as well if you'd like to do it on the website.
Sure.
Okay.
Some of the things that Dawn just said, that in fact, if they think is really important is it's, if the issues become not the teacher's problem to solve, it becomes the kid's problem to solve. That's the big part of it.
Well, teachers can't solve all the issues. So we have to train each other to take care of each other.
And it's built on what does every kid in the classroom need to be successful? So that's kind of the basis of the meetings. They start that with like, okay, what does everybody in this room need in order to be successful today? And the kids, lets kids say like, I need Trevor to stop tapping his pencil on the table. Because, you know, but just that language of like, oh, okay. Instead of like, stop it, stop it, stop it, you know, you get a bad reaction to that. And when they have an understanding of, this kid cannot ever finish his math if I'm tapping my pencil. That's few different to kids, so it gives them a way to process that stuff.
How does the home component of the thing work? You've mentioned a home component.
Yeah, so.
Or is that something that, I mean?
It keeps parents in the loop of what the language is, what skills they're working on and what classroom meetings are happening. So they can continue the conversation at home and then translate those skills to what's happening at home.
How will you communicate that to parents?
There's actual parent, like you can do the electronic, but there's, there's like books with worksheets, yeah. They just go home in the Friday folder, here's what we're working on right now. And then it has like the homeschool connection tips about, now how does that same thing that we just did at school, how do you translate that into what you do at home? Either in your family or sports or church or, you know, extracurricular chores, whatever.
So once this becomes, once this becomes a habit, it's going to, it's just going to change the entire culture of the school or the building that it's in.
I think, I think so too.
Yeah, that's what I'm designing about.
Yeah, because it's a habit and it'll be consistent, yeah. And that'll be a big deal, so great, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
For taking the evening to come.
Thank you for coming in, Dawn.
Sure. Can I just say that? Yeah, sure, thanks, thanks, Dawn.
Okay, moving back up to number A, our mid-year review of district goals and strategic visioning plan goals.
Yeah, so our current staff confirmed, yeah. So let's look at goal number one. Every student will attend 95 or more school days. So our two performance indicators there are students who have no more than nine absences in a school year. And our numbers look, not what our goal numbers are, but they look much better than last year. But don't get too excited yet because they still can miss, you know, days. This is, this is, um, nine or fewer absences so far. So these numbers will likely all go down a bit, but they're, they're hovering around better, not stellar. So then the second indicator there, students will attend school every day in the first month. And our numbers were up from last year and some grades significantly up, but still nowhere near our 95% goal. So progress, not perfection on that one. Those bottom numbers for indicator two obviously won't change as September has passed. Any questions on those?
Moving in the right direction.
Moving in the right direction.
Those are some pretty good increases for one year.
They are, it just feels uphill, right?
Yeah, it does. You're moving in the right direction.
The counselors who are working on this one are like, oh, like it feels like you make so much progress. But, you know, there's that chronic absenteeism group that is kind of a statewide issue. In fact, we just had a big ESD meeting about it, um, a couple of weeks ago, that the state's really taking on the chronic absenteeism issue.
Huh, interesting.
Not, not just a problem here, but.
The students, um, uh, will attend school every day during the first month. Grades nine through 12.
Yeah.
That's a huge increase.
It is, I know, isn't that great?
And is that, you know, I know that Wade Lockett was really trying to get kids connected to something in the school. So do you know if he was doing that right away on day one? Just like getting every kid connected to something? You know, to start a habit, just to start it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the things they did this year is refocus the AGs. So we've been doing a staff, um, PE series on 3C student engagement, which is our, right? But they've been doing those model lessons and then the homework is on your AG lessons.
Ah, okay.
So they've kind of pushed the reset button on all of that, so that we feel like is helping. But also it's the work of Esmeralda Perez, who's our, yeah, she just, hello.
And, yeah, okay, I wonder, that was my next question was, was Esmeralda.
Yeah.
And she, does she do home visits?
She does on occasion, yeah.
When needed?
And then they also added, remember, a little bit later in the year, um, dropout prevention coordinators?
Yeah.
Who do a lot of scoop and, right? So if the, if a kid has not shown up, they get indicators, they text and they're out.
And then there's a, yeah, okay, okay, great, okay.
And is that paid for with the?
Measure, uh, high school success.
High school success.
Fix that, not number 98, no more, yeah, high school success, yeah. Um, I also feel like I should point out that these numbers currently in Oregon still take into account school-related absences. So if you're gone for baseball or swimming or golf or basketball or whatever, you're counted in this.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So we're never going to hit 95% in high school unless we change that. It's, it's just, we don't want to hit 95%. We want our kids out doing things, but that's just something we keep in mind. Okay, and then 100% of our students will be on track to graduate. So the performance indicator for K eight is that they will be at or above grade level in reading and math. So I just did the district average for you of where we are now compared to where we were last year at this time. So reading, we were at 61, we're at 63. Honestly, that could be exactly the same. That's within the standard error of measurement, so that you could be right on track with where we were. Those will tend to go up at the end of the year, but that's about where we were this time last year. And then math, 66% to 76%. I hope that that's the focus on math that we've had the last two years and resetting everyone in the Singapore math model, but, you know, let's go with that.
I'm sure it has something to do with that, yeah.
Let's go with that. So, but math is looking better. And you've heard from some of your elementary principals that they're seeing incredible math scores, like they have never seen before. Entire grade levels of kids that have gone through the program with consistency and that 80 and 90% on track. So it's good stuff if we can get over the, that's not how we learn math, huh? Right? Okay, and then the high school indicator is students will earn at least six high school credits by the completion of ninth grade. So for the six credits, I gave you the two numbers, 88% for first semester last year and we're at 96% this year. I also added in though, all of the required credits. Because a kid can get six credits but have failed English or math or something else they need to graduate. So it's a little bit misleading to say they're on track to graduate when they've missed a class that's required to graduate. So I put both of the numbers there because our indicator is six credits. So we're at 96% there. And then kids who have passed all of their required credits. So if they did miss something, it was an elective, it wasn't a core content, that's at 92%. So those numbers are looking to a range.
Those are good, very good.
Yeah. And then goal, our goal three is that 100% of our teachers will meet or exceed the district standard for student engagement. And we won't know that until we complete affirmative evaluations at the end of the year. But every, um, building has done a professional development on student engagement every month all year. So we're, I hope that it's, it's looking good, yeah. Any questions on any of those?
Very good. Things are moving in the right direction. That's very nice, it's very good to see.
Okay.
That's exciting.
It is, it's very true.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Anything about the district goals or?
I gave you a copy of the district goals there and just to remind you what those are. And Jennifer just went over goal number one.
Yeah.
And keep in mind that this is the fourth year, five years of strategic planning for these goals. And so these measures will continue for one more year. Uh, the beauty of this next year though is, is we get to open the district year plan wide open and, uh, and refine some of these goals and really revisit them from our district standpoint about what you believe should be included for the next five years. So I think it's a great opportunity as, as we move through next year. Uh, the second one is on creating public engagement opportunities through use of regional work sessions and other means. And tonight's a perfect example. I think you've been your probably best, best jury or something like that. Uh, we've had clearly some turnout at each one of these meetings here at Silver Crest and at Creek Schools. I would encourage you to consider this option as you move into next year as well. I think it's a new merit to this and generally speaking, it's been well-received. You've got some competition with beautiful days on a day like today, that's for sure. but I think you've been well-received in general, really, and making sure baseball and track season, et cetera. But the regional meetings, I appreciate the work also, as we put on their other meetings. Enrollment Work Group is a great opportunity to get some additional public input. And of course, each one of your board meetings, you have received, I think, plenty of public input. And I think your strong encouragement of that makes a difference because you have people coming to board meetings comfortable to speak with you and to give you input and ask you questions. And that's exactly what the system is designed to do. So I commend each one of you for that. Ms. Chairman, if it's all right, if I can move on to C, because that's actually a really different...
I was just going to say, thank you to you for sending the call out last week about this meeting and the Budget Committee.
Yeah, a lot of our district-wide system.
Yeah. That was very good timing, because you could get to it once.
Yeah, exactly.
And I just wanted to mention really quick on the topic of the creating the public engagement opportunities. I think it was a very unique idea. And I think that it really sent a message, hopefully our first year, sending a message to our community and our district families that we do want you to come. We want you to be engaged. And it's been really fun to go out to the schools and see the schools and talk to the principals and be on-site when we don't always have, when we can't always do that. So I really appreciate you guys bringing everything out to the site. I know it's kind of a, you know, it can be a difficult situation and carrying everything out from the district office. And thank you for your hard work, you know, with everything. So I think it went well. So thank you very much. It's a good partner, yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead on the thought exchange.
So the third, 3C is related to a public engagement process titled Thought Exchange. And I imagine all six of you are, remember this, are familiar with it because we've done it a few times within this school district. It's a unique subscription that we have for another setting for the meeting of this year that allows us to, I think, reach out to a broader scope of the public rather than, and I shouldn't say rather than, but in addition to the other opportunities that we have. And this one happens to be an electronic engagement opportunity where we literally send out on a survey, there's actually open-ended questions that allow the public to respond. And the Thought Exchange Company, which is a company that we subscribe to, literally takes each one of the thoughts, hence the name, each one of the thoughts, and captures them within certain themes and then breaks those down by school. And so there are school-wide results and then those are compiled into district-wide results over a very sophisticated system and period of time that allows you to have some direct feedback and allows us as district administration to have some feedback based upon whatever the question is that we're asking. Traditionally, the questions that we've asked with this public engagement process have been pretty general, like what's working well, what's not working well, what suggestions do you have for improvement? A couple, maybe three questions to allow folks to have that open-ended conversation. My sense is that some of you have participated in that in the past. This time, and actually, we've used this tool in the past for obtaining public information related to facilities. We used it on one patient specific to a bond election and which proved to be very valuable to the board at the time for making decisions about how to frame the bond election. I think it could be a tool in the future to use for that purpose as well in addition to a traditional survey, something we call the Nelson Survey, which we've used a few times in the past and most recently used prior to the 2013 bond. So with all that said, we have one more use of this, and it's slated for the month of May. Likely be out by the second week, could be the first week, but the intent is to have the results in place by close to the end of the school year, so those will be shared with the administration and shared with you. The purpose is to be a bit of springboard for a strategic plan process for next year. And the questions that are being crafted through Thought Exchange, Jennifer and I and Derek McFresser, communications person, have already had some conversations with Thought Exchange. And they'll be around really what we continue to do as a school district because they'll be open-ended questions, but really with a specific target about what is, what do you consider to be the components of a complete education? In other words, what are we missing? What, where can we do better? But also, what are we missing from a complete education standpoint? And so that's not only in areas of curriculum, but enrichment opportunities, extension opportunities, remediation, and even opportunities similar to what Jennifer and Dawn shared this evening related to support in the social and emotional arena, curriculum, things like that. That's at least the intent of gleaming this information. And then this information will be fresh and available for your use as we move into strategic planning next year. So I think it's a valuable time. Again, we owe one more run with this thing and looking forward to it. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that and other opportunities.
Good, thank you, Ellie.
You have one?
That data plus the TELL survey results are really nice for us to have both of those going into strategic planning.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. The tricky part about the Thought Exchange is that it's, we push it out to all parents and all community members and we have an active email address for it. We do a promo and a media blast as well to get community members to engage. But in each Thought Exchange process in the past, all of the participants have been parents and staff. And so I love, and what we did the strategic planning a few years ago, we got active member participation from multiple stakeholder groups, everything from chambers to religious groups to seniors and a number of those through our forums, our focus groups, and when we brought lots of people from the community into the district office to have some great conversations. That doesn't always result in the same with Thought Exchange. So that's why I think it's important as we do strategic planning next year that we not only use this electronic engagement opportunity, but then we do the traditional opportunities because that's actually those people that wouldn't otherwise participate.
Other questions?
I have a question about just ideas for getting more participation on the Thought Exchange. Do we ever do like a press release?
We do press releases, and we had not used Facebook for this purpose in the past.
Oh, no.
That's what we used, because it wasn't so active when we were doing this. So, well, we may have used Facebook for that purpose. Well, regardless, we'll be using that and traditional media as well as our media webpage. Principals, we ask to send out the link directly to their parents, ask them to send it to grandparents, to community members, as well, so we're really aggressively pushing this out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That is all our discussion items tonight. So after a short break, or after a short break, we'll adjourn regular session and move into executive session under ORS 192660F, exempt public records, superintendent evaluation, personnel records. So thank you for coming, everyone. It's nice to be out here. And thank you for inviting me. Okay, we'll move out of executive session and back into regular session with no further business. We're adjourned for the night, thank you.